Good morning, let us bow. Our heavenly Father, we are indeed grateful for the opportunity to serve our communities this morning. Father, we pray that as we make decisions this morning, as we deliberate the matters before us, that we use wisdom. We pray that you guide us, that we can act in the best interest of our county and of our citizens. Father, we pray that you be with those who are not able to be here this morning, those that are sick, be with people all over the world who are in difficult circumstances, that they may be relieved. Father, be with us, forgive us of our sins, in Christ's name. Amen. Now join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Thank you, you may be seated. Call a roll please, Gail.
Charlotte P., Chip Pinion, Craig Lynch, David Jones, Jim Aberwater, Lee Bogle, Marvin Whitworth, Mike Kush, Pettis Reed, Rhonda Allen, Jeff Phillips.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Gail. We have no minutes to approve this morning, and we have no items that have been withdrawn or deferred, so we'll get right into our new business. We have one item that's been submitted for preliminary plan approval, 6A1. The item number is 22-1003 Walnut Grove Reserve, 74 lots on 50.99 acres, is owned RM located along Walnut Grove Road. Walnut Grove Reserve is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and good morning, everyone. Before getting into this, I just wanted to make just a real quick announcement in the event someone may be here to discuss this particular, or at least to hear about this particular item. The Whitestone development, this was something we actually removed off the agenda last week. So the agenda you have before you doesn't have it on there. We did a revised agenda. But in the event someone may be here for Whitestone, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that that was not going to be considered tonight, today. So I just wanted to make that quick announcement. So on to Walnut Grove Reserve. As you stated, the applicant's proposing to develop 74 lots on this property. This is zoned residential medium density RM, so the minimum lot size is 15,000 square feet. This is not a planned development, so the lot sizes are larger. Staff does have several concerns about this particular property. I'm going to turn it over to Mike regarding some of the jurisdictional elements on this plan, as well as some grading around a TVA line, but, or tower, I should say, but I'm going to turn it over to Mike for a little more thorough discussion on that. So Mike.
All right, thank you, Doug. When we see development come in, we look at thoroughly as possible, and I'm going to preface what I'm saying is I'm not a biologist, I'm not certified to make wetlands or stream determinations, but if we see water standing on a piece of property, or a lot of water features, we see hydroic soils that are classified through the U.S. Department of Agriculture, it sends up a red flag to us. So in this instance, we've asked the development team to do a hydrologic determination and a wetland determination, and it did come back with several features that will need to be protected or mitigated. So in the process, you send it off to TDEC and also the Corps of Engineers. And TDEC came back and said, okay, yes, we agree, there's some wetlands, pond, several ponds that will need to be protected or mitigated, and then they write a concurrence letter. And so with that, about mid-step. So, and then it goes off to the Corps of Engineers, and they review it as well. And the Corps of Engineers came back and said, okay, there is a feature where these wetlands drain through. The Corps of Engineers and the person doing the stream determination, the wetlands determination, said, okay, it's a wet weather conveyance. So that's all in good, but when it drains these wetlands and other features, it becomes potentially jurisdictional, that they may have jurisdiction in. And I'll try to show you where I'm talking about. This is the property highlighted in yellow. This is Walnut Grove Road, which is State Route 269. It's a T-DOT road. I'll zoom in to the property. Computer will act, right? Okay, so you see some standing water in places. There's some here, back in this area, and then there, I believe there's one here is a pond, and then there's another pond up here. Well, these wetlands kind of drain through this area, kind of float, they empty, build up, and spill out and flow through this area. And this is what I was talking about. The TDEC considers it a wet weather conveyance, which is just, has water in it when it, during a rain event typically. But like I said, the Corps said, because it drains jurisdictional features, that too may be a feature itself. But if it's under a certain limit, like half an acre, it might not be classified as one. And they've been going back and forth, and I've asked the design team to bring their hydrologic specialist to talk about this, but it's supposedly below the limit of the half acre, so it may, may be okay. But I was not sure how the Corps of Engineers makes their final determination on that, because you can kind of see the road network. These are center lines of proposed roads here and here, so, and they're proposing, and I'll go back to the plan, they're proposing to have several residential building lots in this area, and a road, and all that stuff. So all that being said is, we need to make sure that if it needs to be protected, it's going to be protected. If it needs mitigation, it needs to be mitigated, and either credits bought in a wetland bank somewhere else, or some other mitigation feature is done. So that's, that's one thing that, that gave us a little pause, was making sure we had the final determination on that. Another thing is the, you can see, this is a TVA line here, and they have those paired up monolithic poles instead of the big massive spread towers that you see in some areas. These are the singular poles, but there's two of them right there. Well, in my past life as a design engineer, working around TVA towers, you're always supposed to be at least 25 feet away from these towers. So you don't want to undermine the towers and give some instability to these towers. And that was one of our comments. They believe that they've addressed that, but we will need verification from TVA to make sure that that is not too close to their towers. So we, that's, that's something else we'll need to get, excuse me, from them. And then the third thing that I, we had, zoom out a little bit and show you. They have done a traffic study, and the traffic study essentially came back and said, for the number of lots that they're proposing, which is, let's see, 74 lots, and the traffic load on Walnut Grove Road, let me back up a little bit. So when, when you look at a traffic study, you look at the traffic today, you look at the traffic in a time period out five years, or whatever time period, and then, then you look at that time period five years from, from the today, and see how these additional houses would impact the traffic in those five years, and see, does that call for any traffic improvements? And this area, Walnut Grove Road, is right now one of our busiest areas in Rutherford County. We've got a lot of activity going on. You've got Clearview Acres here, you've got Walnut Grove Farms here, you've got Walnut Chase here, Walnut Downs, and Lewis Downs, which connects to it. So these, these, all these developments have done traffic studies as well, and what we're seeing as part of that impact, they're having to make improvements at Walnut Grove and Sheberville Highway. Right now, a traffic signal is not warranted, but they are making turn lane improvements to allow for better turning movements out of Walnut Grove Road. So if one person's wanting to turn left and go north on Sheberville Pike, it won't back up a lot of cars here that you've got dedicated right and left turn lanes. So that's part of the process, but.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, they are.
And, okay, we'll pull the trigger on that, and who's paying for this? Some of these developments down the road paying for it?
Clearview Acres, I can't remember if Walnut Chase is adding into that. They are Walnut, excuse me, Clearview Acres is one of the biggest ones. What does it got, 350, 400 lots, something like that? So they're, they're in, three phases in, I think. This is the third phase that's coming in here, and with this additional traffic load that we keep seeing, this additional work, it required additional improvements down here to allow the traffic to move. So another aspect will be, this property here, if you can see my cursor, is Richland Downs, and they will have, no, Richmond's Retreat, sorry, Richmond's Retreat. They will have another section here connecting to Walnut Grove Farms here, that you can see the little stub street, which can come out and go this way. So there's a lot, lot of activity in this area. Up the street, you've got more developments, recently, I'll zoom out, sorry if my computer will work. Recently, we've been told that due to the high crash ratio, there will be a traffic signal installed, off my aerial, at Rock Springs Midland and Sheberville Pike. It's, it's like three times the state average for traffic accidents. There's been fatalities, serious traffic accidents. So with all of this growth happening in the area, we're seeing more and more traffic. So going back to this development, their traffic study said, right now, and in the foreseeable five-year future, we don't see the need for turn lanes on Walnut Grove Road. However, like I said, knowing that this area is exploding, and looking at the soils in this area, there's a lot of good soil for development around this property and on Walnut Grove Road. So the green blobs are suitable septic system soils. They'll still have to be tested by a soil scientist and make sure that it meets CUD's requirements for step systems, but what I'm getting at is, there's a lot of development potential in this area. So I would be in favor of go ahead and installing a left turn lane into this development with this project, even though their traffic study doesn't call for it now. I could see the need for more traffic all around this area, causing that to happen. So typically, you look at the, the growth of traffic in an area, and it's usually 2%, 3%. We're seeing a lot more in this, this area than historically we've seen, and actually all over Rutherford County. So that would be my recommendation, to go ahead and install a left turn lane. So if somebody is coming down from Stodens River, Walnut Grove Road, they will be able to safely turn into here. So if you look at the development, and I will. There it is, okay. So this is Walnut Grove Road, this is the subject property here, and even though it's a state road, you can see the water features I was talking about all around, it is just a two-lane, two-lane road with some rumble strips in case somebody gets off the side. So I think it would be prudent to go ahead and get turn lanes installed. It's going to be a higher burden for the developer, but I think if we don't get it now, we're going to regret it in the future. So those were our, our big issues, and then, yes, sir.
Mike, right there, what you've got shown, I will preface this by saying, I've gone through this road all my life, and I was through there Saturday afternoon, and once you make the turn, which will be behind you here, go toward Sheberville Pike, the road is torn all to pieces.
Yes, sir.
Barely wide enough in places where the crumbles off, where the traffic has, construction traffic has done. It's barely passable with two cars passing at the same time. But question on these two water features, do, will there be enough room to put in lanes? Because you can't.
They would have to make.
Come past that, won't they? They cannot put the turn lane where those water features are.
Well, they'd have to work in conjunction with them. They would have to mitigate some of those, close some of those off, to make enough room for a turn lane in there.
Okay.
And that's typically what I would see, is shifting the development towards their side. Let me back to features. So they are showing, try to zoom in without making much issue. So they are dedicating 25 feet of right-of-way, because typically the deeds go to the center line of the road. So they're going to be dedicating at least 25 feet. So what I'm getting at is they, we need to go ahead and ask for a turn lane now, if, if that's so, you know, the, the will of this commission. But that would be my recommendation, go ahead and ask for it now, because it's going to be, this area, like I said, it's, it's in transition, a lot of good, developable land. I think Wendell Jones had owned this property, or as trust maybe still does, but there's, there's a lot of development potential in this area.
This property does have some water problems, and I'm not sure I could support it with it being, till all that gets worked out.
Well, that's, the, the, TDEC says they're okay with, with what they've determined. The Corps is the one that I need some help from their, their design team to explain, because I'm, well, I'm not a biologist, I'm not certified to make these determinations and all the steps. I just, when I see a red flag, I say, hey, timeout, let's, let's look at this and, and make sure everything's okay. So they believe that it's less than the threshold information, but I just, I need somebody to explain what the steps are. Maybe it's okay, maybe we're just being a little too over cautious, I don't know. So, but that's, that's where I am, is, is on those things. But I will tell you, with all of these water features and hydroic features, we're going to, if this does get approved and, and moves forward, we are going to require a geotechnical engineer to be on-site to make sure that these lots and roads, if they are developed in a, in a manner that they show on these plans, that they're, that the residents living here are protected, the, the roads will not fail to, to substandard soils, so I'm going to require a geotech engineer on-site for a lot of the work that's done in this, this area. Typically, we do that for turn lanes, where you're widening that out anyway, but we always think that, you know, if you're dealing with, with wet or hydroic soil, it needs special treatments, special work to make sure that it's, it's not going to fail, it's not going to be an issue for the, the future neighbors and the, the future roads. So that's, that's where I stand. Yeah, he's, they brought the development specialist, if, if I want to talk to him about how, how these determinations are made. Like I said, I'm not a biologist, I'm not, I'm not certified to make these determinations. Just when I see water or hydroic soil, it, it causes an issue.
Please, come forward.
Yes, sir.
Give Gail your name and address, please.
and performed about 40 of these, so I got pretty used to working with the Corps and also with TDEC, and got to know a lot of the folks out there. So I went out there just before Thanksgiving, I think the day before, and started the HD report. I identified, you know, some of the more obvious features on there, and then the feature in question, the wet weather conveyance 2, I left off.
Not in this area here, yeah.
What Mr. Hughes was talking about there. And I left it off the report, and so when Virginia Lawrence from TDEC went out there and did her HD verification, she left that feature off of her concurrence later, letter, and she said that it needs to be accounted for. So I went out there and, on the 15th of February, and put that feature in there, and it roughly followed what she thought it was going to be. Identified it as coming out of Pond 3, right there, and Wetland 1. And you see, I have an upland point right there as well, to establish the wet weather conveyance.
Explain what an upland point is, Billy.
Oh, the upland point?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so I was out there also on January 4th, and it'd been snowing a lot. So we got out there, and everything was much wetter than it was right before Thanksgiving. And, and it was actually flowing that day. So the Corps sent in a request for additional information to show that I had established the correct limits for Wetland 1, and that's what that upland point is. That's where I just filled out another wetland determination form, looked at the soil. I think the soil was TNYR 3/3, which is not hydroic, and it didn't have any coloration in it except for that. And also the vegetation, if I recall, didn't, didn't score out as hydroic. I might be wrong on that. But it takes three, three things to make a wetland. It takes hydrology, it takes the hydrophytic vegetation, and hydroic soils. So it was lacking definitely in the soil, and I think it was lacking the vegetation as well. As far as the wet weather conveyance 2, that same day, I was out there and roughly figured out the bed and bank, they're quite faint, there's even parts of that that's more sheet flow that, that goes across. And I ended it where the bed and bank ends, in this, this little grove of cedar trees up in there. And, and it, it may have sheet flow over into that other part that Mr. Hughes was talking about, that he thought looked saturated, but if you look at that area on multiple years and months of, of historical imagery, you'll see that it, it appears dry most of the time. And so even though one indicator for hydrology, a secondary indicator, is saturation in aerial imagery, you have to pick multiple years and what it looks like, the preponderance of the time, to actually use that qualifier. And it, it's generally dry most of the time. In more recent years, it may be wet in a few more of the, the photos, because I think we have some clogged or undersized pipes that come out there at the driveway. You can see that driveway area. So all of that doesn't drain like it should, but it, it didn't make it hydroic. In fact, the day that I was out there with, with Jennifer Watson from the Corps, we checked that area for hydroic soil, because it was underwater that day, and it was all brown. So brown soils, if they're 100% brown with no coloration, are generally not hydroic.
That's typically, see, I'm not an expert, I rely on these experts, and if, if the state says they're okay, the Corps of Engineers says they're okay, I'm good. That's typically what happens. So I just, when I see a red flag, I, you know, I ask for hydrologic and wetlands determination, and, and then verification from TDEC and the Corps of Engineers, and.
It is actually, a whole lot of this wet weather conveyance 2 that you saw in that one photo is Gladeville Rockout Complex. So you will get a lot of channelization in that, you know, either strong channelization or faint, like this one, but water's moving through so fast, because, you know, it, it doesn't have anywhere to go, because the bedrock's right there under it. And the area that they're talking about up there next to the driveway.
Yeah.
That has that, what was it, Eagleville Silty Clay Loom, or something like that up there. And it shows a portion of hydroic soils in it, but just because something shows even 100% hydroic soils, such as a Melvin or something like that, it doesn't mean it's necessarily going to be a wetland, because you have to have all three factors to make it that. You have to have the hydrology, the vegetation, and the hydroic soils.
So that, that was one thing, is just we need, they, they've issued a preliminary jurisdictional?
Yeah, she did a preliminary. What has happened? The, the Corps started changing some rules based off of a Arizona court case back at the end of, maybe it was in August, but the rules change started happening in October. And they're short-staffed, so if you go for an approved JD or an AJD, that has to go off, out of the regional office, and it takes it a long time, like up to six months to get back. And, you know, someone's trying to do their due diligence, you know, and they have 180s to get, 180 days to get it done. That's just, they don't have time to do that. Now, if you do a PJD, the preliminary, that means that you accept the findings, you're not going to be able to appeal anything, and then you're going to design around it or get the proper permitting to.
But what, what they're saying is that this feature is less than half an acre, and it won't require mitigation or anything like that. We'll just have to make sure that lots are filled and compacted properly, the roads have sufficient subgrade, so they don't sink or fail or anything like that. So that's, that's the only, one of the issues I had. And then, you know, the other one was the, the TVA tower. This is an earlier construction plan that was submitted to us, and it's showing, you know, within that 15, excuse me, 25-foot bubble around the tower. that 15, excuse me, 25-foot bubble around the tower, that it needs to be outside of that 25-foot and it needs to be approved through TBA.
Richard Howes with SEC. Yes, we have addressed that comment that came in with the original set of comments on the preliminary submittal. We have not resubmitted the revised construction plans at this time because we were waiting to get the approval on this to make sure that we're good with the PJD, the hydraulic stuff. So we have everything roughly on the preliminary side of it, at least 25 feet or more away from the towers. And we will go ahead and get the verification from TBA once we've got the plans completed. I'd also like to address the traffic. The traffic study said we were not required to do any kind of improvements. We have volunteered to give a four-foot shoulder based on previous projects down the road. As far as a turn lane, this is the first I am hearing about this. We will, if we are required to do the turn lane, we're going to need some help from the county requiring the right-of-way because the properties go to the center line of the road. So that would be a necessity to be able to make the turn lane with the tapers.
Like I said, the report says one is not needed, but that's just my opinion that if we don't ask for one now, it'll be hard to get one later.
Question again. The water runs from the water features there in the quote "back" or the middle of the property to the front of the property, Walnut Grove Road. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, generally.
How's it going to get there? That's my question again. On another plant, I don't see a conveyance from the water feature here in the middle to the front. Is it going to go through people's yards?
No, sir. We have, the grading will be set up to collect it in a ditch system into a pipe. It will then run through our detention pond and out through one of the ponds that goes underneath the road, through the pipe underneath the road and over to the creek, the river, actually.
He's got a long linear stormwater management area here. I assume that's part of what they're going to use.
Currently, those ponds, as Billy alluded to, they're a handful of pipes that go underneath Walnut Grove Road, some 36-inch pipes. Well, those 36-inch pipes aren't clean. There's only about 15 inches worth of clearance in them for the water to go through. We have contacted TDOT to come out and clean them out.
Can you explain to me how you are to build on some of that glade property?
Exactly. Build it how?
Build a house on glade property?
We're going to, the area that you're talking about there at the front, those handful of lots, we will be bringing in fill and filling about three or four feet on those lots. And as Mike alluded to, we will have a geotech engineer out there to verify that it is suitable soils.
In other words, you're going to have to bring soil in there to?
Yes, sir.
To do that. Because I was just trying to figure that out.
Yes, sir.
I've lived on glades and all it grows is crowfoot.
Yeah, we will have to bring in material, especially at the front along the, can you go back to the preliminary?
Yeah.
All right, it's other. The lots 58 through 68 and lots 1 through 13 will roughly have about three to four foot of fill, maybe a little bit more in some spots to be able to make this project work.
Typically, if we see any plan that requires two or more feet of fill, we require geotechnical compaction reports on the lots, anything like that, to make sure that the houses don't settle in the future. Roads, we want to geotech out there, making sure it doesn't sink or settle as well. That's the key to having a good road is the subgrade. If you've got a good solid subgrade where it don't sink or settle, that's half the battle right there is having a road that'll last you a long time. Those are my things. Like I said, we've done this before in other places, had wetland determinations, stream determinations. We've had, like I said, I've worked around towers before. We just need a letter from TBA saying that they're good with the plan. And if y'all want to talk about the traffic study, we can.
Back to the turning lane. You said this is the first you've heard about turning lane?
This is the first that I have been told about adding the turning lane. Yes, sir.
Given what Mike says about the turning lane, I'm thinking it'll probably require a turning lane. Now, what did you say just a minute ago about the turning lane, half the middle of the road? What was that?
If you saw on our plan that we were dedicating 25-foot of right-of-way because our deed goes to the center line of the road currently. You can pretty much expect all the rest of the deeds around that area to go to the center line, which means that that property owner actually owns that property and we cannot go in and make improvements on their property. I realize it is a TDOT road, but our deed goes to the center line and most of the rest of them do too.
So Mike, what do we do?
We shift the turn lane onto their property.
Onto their property.
Yep.
That's correct. That's correct. Okay.
Well, you've got the ponds there, that's going to kind of, I mean, if we shift it, I don't know that we've got enough room because that's what, a 45 mile an hour speed limit through there, Mike?
Yeah. And it would lengthen, 40 or 45, I believe. So it would lengthen that. So I mean, if we want to say we agree with the traffic study and one's not required, these are the same headaches that we'll be trying to solve in the future when we see more development around it.
Now, we do have, like, on the plan, we do have stub outs to neighboring properties.
Right.
The big property behind us actually fronts on a separate road, which would have an option to have an access there also. So I don't know.
So yeah, he's talking, there's a stub here, here, and here. So there's three stubs to the surrounding properties.
And then we've got one to the south also, Mike.
Here?
Yes.
Okay, that's, yeah. One, two, three.
Great, okay. But I mean, you would have the option to route the traffic. I mean, they'd have that option to go out the other way if that ever develops also. And we only have 69 buildable, 68 or 69 buildable lots within this subdivision.
I mean, if we want to put it off till later and reevaluate, so if this property comes in later, we could say, okay, you're connecting to these, this development, we need you to evaluate this intersection. Is a turn lane approved? I mean, we could do that, we've done that at other places. That's kind of what we're doing here. At the time, turn lanes weren't required. They're having to go back and make improvements at this intersection of Walnut Grove and Shebbel Pike, so.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Mike. We are the planning commission. We have to plan for the future. As you said, this is a growing area. The traffic there is already difficult and the road is crumbling with construction traffic where it's hard for two cars to get by, which will only get worse. If we, I think we would be, we would not be doing our duty if we don't plan ahead knowing this information and knowing that growing, that it is only going to grow more. So turn lanes, if any of the developers are listening or watching in the future, anywhere in Rutherford County, with this rate of growth, we need turn lanes.
And we don't have a problem doing the turn lane. We will require some help from the county to acquire, I have a feeling, right-of-way. No matter if we shift it onto us or not, I still think we're going to be off of our property.
County's not in the business of developing property, so that would be up to y'all.
Let me ask a question. All of the wetlands or all of the ponds, they're probably all on lots that will not be built upon, correct?
They're all in open space, yes, sir.
Who's going to maintain those?
HOA.
You're sure about that?
That's how, it's operated before. I mean, I can't mandate what they do once we're gone. But that's what the rules and regulations as set under the subdivision regs are right now, yes.
Lot 74, it's kind of a square lot and it shows a wetland in that corner.
Yes, sir.
I'm pretty sure that wetland just doesn't square off perfectly like that. How does that work when you have wetlands on part of a development and then part of another piece of property? How does that work?
It's considered a wetland, although we only determine it on our piece of property, but it will extend over onto their property and that buffer will wrap around it as, around there.
Ms. Chairman, I have a question for Mike. Mike, I should probably know the answer to this by now, but on the traffic study, when you talked about all the additional development that's happening out there, when they do their traffic study, do they have to go ahead and look at the other developments that are in place or do they only have to look at the current situation?
They look at the current situation. They look at, they take a snapshot of the traffic today. They take a snapshot of projected growth in five years, say. And then they look at the five-year growth with this development on top of it. And they, is it a problem today? Is it a problem tomorrow? And their traffic study said, right now, all the intersections that we asked them to look at are not, and plus the new hazelnut drive, are not a problem, won't be a problem, except for the development that they're working on, I mean, the intersection Walnut Grove and Shebbel Pike. That is a problem and they are working on that right now. So hopefully that will improve. But it doesn't, it takes the, they look at the historic growth, 2%, 3% in the area. I think if we looked at the growth in this area alone snapshot-wise, it's accelerating. I mean, it's coming in fast. That's my thought, is we need to go ahead and ask for it now.
Good to the bottom line, Mike and Doug. After all the conversation that we had, does staff have any type of opinion or recommendation as to where we should go?
We, it is a workable project. It is a project that we can work with and work around. It's just, it's like anything in Rutherford County, all the good property's gone and you have these remnant parcels left that have these challenges. So we can work with this. It's just hydroic soils and the streams and the wetlands, we have to work around, the traffic and the roads and the lots and everything like that. So I mean, we've, I've seen worse that have been developed in the county, like that.
If the planning commission were to approve this preliminary plan with staff comments and conditions, the final would have to be 100% up to your satisfaction and recommendation before it would be approved to be.
Yes, sir, right. So they get the preliminary plan approved. With that, they can submit official construction plans. We review the construction plans with a fine-tube comb, make sure everything meets our standards and it's not going to be an issue for the new residents or the current residents, property owners around here. And so we look at everything that we can, make sure it's okay. And then we allow them to start construction and then they can start creating the final plots to sell the lots off.
The TBA power easement, there's a road that runs under that. That's okay?
Yes, sir, that's okay. It's just, they want you to stay a certain distance away from the towers to not impact the structural integrity of those towers. We've got other developments down the Walnut Grove Farms. It has TBA towers similar to this, the same line that goes through, actually. And they had to stay a certain distance away to make sure that. So we'll just require, before we allow them to start construction, is that they'll submit plans to TBA and get a letter back from them saying everything's good with them. If everything's good with them, we're good.
We have no problem with that.
So like I said, it's got its challenges. Most projects in Rutherford County have their challenges. They, you know, work with us and we will work with them, make this happen.
Mike, do you think all of this is workable?
It's going to be a challenge. I mean, when I saw the standing water on this and the streams and the, I mean, it's, it was a pause for me. And I'll show you what I'm talking about. So when you see, and you know, this isn't considered hydroic soil, but when you see all this water standing and flowing through and around this development, it makes me a little nervous. But with experts like they've got and working with the TDEC and the Corps of Engineers, as long as they're saying everything's good and we can work around it or mitigate it if necessary, I'm good with it as well.
I was just sitting here looking at this. This one, this one site has everything known to have a challenge on this one site. You've got, you've got TBA power lines, hydraulic, you've got the soils here that are causing, you know, that's why I ask you about how do you build a house on a glade? You're hauling dirt in, hauling soil in. You know, I've always heard, and all of you have heard about, we're going to run out of rock in this county to haul to build with. Now we're going to run out of soil, hauling it to build up to cover rock. And we're seeing this. I don't know if y'all have noticed the names of these streets that are on here. Every one of them's a nut. And this is the nuttiest thing I've ever dealt with here, I think. And I guess, I don't know who thought of this, but this is what we're dealing with and I just don't know. I mean, Marvin and myself live out this way and we've dealt with water on land like this. And, you know, I'm sort of in the back of my mind, I'd just like to see if this works. I mean, to me, it's almost an experiment to see if, hey, can you make this work and go from there? Because there's every challenge known to development within this one site.
Yep. And a sinkhole.
Yeah, and then you've got the traffic over here and I just don't know. It's just, I look at this soil, I look at this water and whatever, and it does concern me about the roads. When, like you said, once you leave, what do we have in future years here? Evidently, with the glade, with the rock, there's rock down there somewhere. So there's going to be a foundation there someplace.
They'll typically bring in shotrock fill to bring these up a lot. And then they'll tap that off with clay and topsoil. So, I mean, like I said, we've worked challenging projects like this before. You remember back, Walnut Chase? This area was supposed to be developed with lots. And then it came back that this was all hydroic soil, wetlands. Low, Dalton, Rue Ellen, some of the repeat offenders that we see, the hydroic soils. And they came back and said, no, we're not going to develop this because this would be too. And they came back and said, no, we're not gonna develop this because this would be too much to mitigate. So they pulled back and only developed this smaller area here, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve with the turn lane and with all of the comments from staff from there.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plan for item 22-1003, Walnut Grove Reserve. Any other questions or comments?
I have one question, Mr. Chair.
Mike.
Mike, the hydrologists mentioned that there was a culvert that maybe undersized. The engineer mentioned there were some culverts that had halfway filled with sediment. Do, since we're putting houses and losing, and putting rooftops, so we're losing some ability to absorb stormwater. Do you think one of these, a cross drain or two, is undersized? And while we have the developer here who's causing to that, we need to have them pay?
Any development, not just this one, it is in our regulations that they're supposed to evaluate the next two downstream drainage structures. So this would be drainage structure number one for this flow path. And then wherever it goes, they have to evaluate, is it undersized right now? If it's undersized even before this development happens, this may need to be upsized to make this development happen. So a lot of times, even though this is a state road, I mean, it, a wet thumb and whatever pipe we had on the truck was put in, you know, back in the day.
Well, I guess where I'm going is, if this was determined to be undersized and the development is contributing to that, is that a T-DOT problem? Or does developer have some financial responsibility?
Developer would be required to do that. So it would have to get approved through T-DOT's hydraulic division, who looks at drainage.
So I think I'm gonna ask Pettis to add that to his motion that if these culverts are deemed undersized, that developer have financial responsibility to upsize those culverts?
I mean, that would be, that's already in our rules right now.
Okay, so this is not, that wouldn't be a new surprise?
No, sir.
Okay, never mind.
That, that pretty much is what I was saying in that motion, that everything we have discussed here, I want to be sure is that we are watching this, that we're seeing that it goes to where it's supposed to go and go from that direction.
Other questions? Once again, we have a motion and a second to approve 22-1003. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Opposition? All are o.
Charlotte P. Greg Lynch. Jim Aberwater. Marvin Whitworth. Mike Kush. Pettis Reed. Rhonda Allen. Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Carries.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item 6B, we have five items that have been submitted for final plat approval. 6B1, the item number is 22-2026, re-subdivision plat of Lot 1, GAN 1, Lot subdivision, and Lot 2, GAN Lot 1 subdivision, and Johnny GAN, tax map 76 parcel 60. Three lots on 7.21 acres, zoned RM, located along Span Town Road. GAN, Benson, Crowder, and McEwen are the applicants. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along Span Town Road. The applicant's proposing to shift some lot lines around or among the three lots, but they're not creating a new lot here. Since this does involve more than two lots, this does have to come before the Planning Commission. Our comments, for the most part, have been addressed. There are just a couple of minor outstanding items. One of them has to do with the standard buffer note for the area that you see there. It's kind of in a hatched pattern, Mike, if you could kind of highlight that, that buffer area right in there. The note just needs to be consistent with Rutherford County regulations. What they have there is just not quite right. And the other, I noticed they misspelled Span Town on the road. They need to add the extra N for that. Again, those are minor things. But beyond that, the plat's in good order. So if you were to recommend approval, just subject to those comments, those should be easy to address.
Thank you, Doug.
Make a motion to approve, staff comments?
We have a motion and a second to approve the final plat for 22-2026, re-subdivision of plat 1 and re-subdivision of Lot 2 for GANT 1 Lot subdivision. Other questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6B2, final plat for item number 22-2028, Michael and Haley Jones subdivision. Three lots on five-plus acres, zoned RM, located along J.D. Todd Road. Michael and Haley Jones are the applicants. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. The applicant's proposing to split this property into three separate lots. The existing house will remain on Lot 1, as you can see on the plat. Lots 2 and 3 will be flag lots with their own road frontage. There is a fire hydrant located at the intersection of J.D. Todd Road and Palms Chapel that these lots are within 1,000 feet of. From that standpoint, it does meet our subdivision regulations. Most of our comments have been addressed. There is something I do want to bring to your attention, just to make you aware. You'll see that on, yeah, Mike's circling it right now, there's an existing shop on that property. Basically, it's a detached accessory structure. Our regulations do not allow a, an accessory structure on a piece of property prior to a principal structure being permitted or built on the property. Sometimes we'll allow them to be built simultaneously. We do see that. They will, if, before this plat's recorded, though, they will need to go ahead and go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special exception to allow that to stay where it is, basically, until a house is built. I just want to make that clear to everybody. That was one of our comments. It's an outstanding comment, but just so everyone's aware that we won't allow this to be recorded until that is taken care of. But the plat in and of itself is in good order, so. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of staff? Doug, if you would comment on the flag lots, the road, the drive that goes back to those, the maintenance of that?
Well, they'll just be basically private driveway. That'd be between the two owners of those properties, basically. Both of them have legal road frontage, as far as that's concerned. Because you can see, one of them, it's just gonna be a real long driveway going to the back, unless they want to use the existing drive, which that's between them and the neighbors. And then the other one's on the other side. That'll just be, you know, private maintenance of a driveway.
Doug, we're gonna have three driveways and a 200-feet span. In your opinion, is traffic on J.D. Todd Road of a concern, having that many driveways packed in?
Considering that these are larger lots and it, I personally don't have any issue with it. I mean, yes, it is adding a couple more driveways, but again, if you look out in the area, you see a lot of large tracks, single-family predominantly. It's, but to answer your question, I don't think adding these two additional driveways of just single-family traffic is gonna be that much of an issue.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve. Subject to any staff comments?
Thank you, Jim. We have a motion and a second to approve the final plat for 22-2028, Michael and Haley Jones subdivision. Other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6B3, final plat for 22-2029, Clear Creek, Section 3, Phase 3. Four lots on 8.93 acres, zoned PUD, located along Ammerville Road. Clear Creek is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. As you stated, these are part of the Clear Creek subdivision. You'll know, these are a little different from all of the other lots. First of all, they're larger. Second of all, these all have access onto Ammerville Road, as opposed to the other lots in the subdivision, which are actually internal to the development. Most of our comments have been addressed. The only outstanding comment, and Mike, it's that area where you see the plat book and page right below 132. Yeah, right in there, yes. That information, of course, that can't be filled out until that plat is recorded. So that was the only outstanding comment we had on this, is that that information should be recorded whenever that adjacent section, which is, I believe, Section 3, Phase 2, when that is actually recorded. That's already been approved. It's just a matter of when it's gonna be recorded. So with that, again, this plat's in good order beyond that.
Thank you, Doug.
Those lots were approved, wasn't it, in a pattern book?
Yes.
Yeah, in the pattern book to be fronting on Ammerville Road.
I move for approval due to the staff's comments of it being in good order upon all their comments.
We have a motion and a second to approve the final plat for item 22-2029, Clear Creek, Section 3, Phase 3. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6B4, final plat for 22-2031, Ron Smith, one lot subdivision, excuse me, two lots on 10.92 acres, zoned RM, located along Arnold Road. Ricky Godfrey is the applicant. Includes waiver request for the creation of a non-buildable lot and a fire hydrant waiver. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. The applicant's proposing to split this property into two lots. Both lots will have access to the 50-foot ingress easement. Lot 1 does have an existing sole site. The applicant has requested that Lot 2 be approved as a non-buildable lot, as no septic soils have been identified at this time. Neither lot's gonna be within 1,000 feet of the fire hydrant, so the applicant has also requested the waiver to this provision. Residential, residential, excuse me, sprinkler systems are not required since this is just a two-lot subdivision. So three lots or greater would require that, trip that in there, but this one would not do that. Most of our comments have been addressed. There are a couple of outstanding items on this. Again, making sure that the stream, they add and label a stream and stream buffer on the south side of the property. And also, the minimum driveway culvert size is shown on the plat, but we probably need to work with engineering on that to make sure that it's going to be adequate. As Mike is showing, and he might add some more comments, there's a good amount of water that kind of flows through this area. We just want to make sure that that pipe is sized appropriately. Beyond that, our comments have been addressed, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Like Doug was saying, they did show a stream on the north side, but actually, there is also one on the south side. And then they put in a couple 18-inch culverts, but just looking at the area flowing to it, you've got a pretty wide swath of land. So we'll just need to work with the design team on this to make sure they're sized adequately, because under Arnold Road, there is a low, flat, box culvert bridge.
This may seem like a crazy question, but we've got one lot, and we want to divide it into two lots.
Right.
And make one of them non-buildable. I'm not 100% sure that makes any sense to me.
The applicant is present, if you'd like to address that to him.
And it was platted as one lot previously.
Sorry, what was that?
It was platted as one lot, and I'll pull that up real quick. This is the original plat that was approved a while back. Let me see. Rotate it. So it was approved as one lot back in '05.
The applicant here. It probably is really obvious to you, but it's not quite so obvious to me. Why do you need a non-buildable lot?
So at the time of the application, we were still waiting our perk test. Actually, last week, they came out and granted us a two-bedroom perk site on the other lot, and they extended the perk site on the existing lot, too. So at the time of the application, it was just a non-buildable lot due to waiting time for the percolation test.
Mike, go ahead.
So now I'm more confused. So you now have a perk site on the second lot?
On the second lot, yeah. So then we reapply for, right now, we're just in the, I'm in the, I'm in the process of building a house on the lot. The bank wanted, obviously, to go ahead and divide the lot now due to, that's what our future was. So at the time, we didn't have a perk test on the additional lot that we wanted. So we've just applied for a non-buildable lot.
Okay. Well, let me ask Doug. Doug, would it behoove him then to keep it as a single lot now that, and forget the application for the non-buildable?
I mean, I guess a lot of it depends on the timing of what he's trying to do. If he has a second sole site that's identified, it might make sense to go ahead and defer this to let the surveyor add that second sole site on to the Lot 2, if that's what you were saying.
Yeah, we're just, we're in a time crunch for, obviously, because to get back the actual maps and then for the estate to come out, things like that, where the bank and the construction company's been waiting for several months now to begin process. And so the bank wanted us to go ahead and get the lots separated now. The plans for building on the second lot won't be until at least two years out. So as, for now, we just wanted the non-buildable lot, and then later on, we reapply for a buildable lot with the septic site approved by the state, and things like that, so.
I mean, if that's what he wants to do, I mean, in the grand scheme of things, he's gonna have to come back one way or another. Once that sole site's added on there, he's gonna have to bring that back, you know, for an amendment.
Right.
At that point, so.
I mean, all he would have to have is the letter that it's a suitable soils and.
Right, so, I mean, in and of itself, that is not something that's gonna be difficult to deal with, you know, adding that on there. One other thing I forgot to mention, the plat needs to label the access easement going to Lot, the second lot, a little bit better than it does. You can see it on there. It's just not labeled real clearly. We had asked that bank, part of the staff comments, this is approved. That's relatively, that little area right here. Yeah, right, just to label that just a little bit better than it is. Because it's showing that's what he's doing, but it just needs to be labeled a little bit better, is all.
I think I feel the applicant's pain on this. Right now, septic, some of the people that are doing soils analysis are months and months behind. Meanwhile, we've got interest rates creeping up. I see what he's trying to do here, and I hope that he can move along fairly expeditiously. So therefore, I'll make a motion to approve, subject to those staff comments.
We have a motion and a second to approve the final plat for 22-2031, Ron Smith, one lot subdivision. Any other questions or comments? Rhonda?
So Doug, knowing that he has a, we don't have the confirmation of the sole site, do we have to classify this as non-buildable because we don't have that? Can we not just classify it as a second lot and then let him bring you that? I'm just trying, I'm trying to help him cut down on the bureaucracy.
Yeah.
I'm just curious.
Well, and unfortunately, our requirements state in the subdivision regulations that they have to have a sole site. So to move it forward without that, that's where the waiver comes into play.
So we have to call it non-buildable?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I just want to say thank you for your service to the force.
Once again, we have a motion to approve. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Officer Godfrey, we would also like to thank you for your service to the county. Item 6B5, final plat for item 22-2032, the estates at Wilson, overall subdivision. Three lots on nine, I'm sorry, 4.94 acres, zoned RM, located along Wilson, overall road. John R. Higgins and Stanley Vaught are the applicants. John R. Higgins and Stanley Vaught are the applicants. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. The applicant's proposing to divide this property into three lots. A right-of-way dedication of 40 feet is being shown on the plat. Lots are not currently within 1,000 feet of a hydrant, so one will be required to be installed as part of this development. They are not asking for a waiver here. That's really more just for informational purposes. If for some reason it comes back and they cannot sport a hydrant, you'll have to see this back again, because they'll have to ask for the waiver for the hydrants, and because it's a three-lot subdivision, the residential sprinkler requirement will kick in at that point. That really is the only outstanding comment we have. Like I said, we don't have a problem moving this forward, under the assumption at this point that there is adequate capacity out there for a hydrant, but if for some reason that changes, you might see this back again, although we've seen other development up and down through here, or at least proposals up and down through here, and I don't recall that being an issue in the past. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
I'll make a motion to approve subject to staff comments.
Have a motion and a second to approve the final plat for 22-2032, the estates at Wilson Overall Subdivision. Other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. All the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Items 6C, we have three items submitted for site plan approval. 6C1, item 22-3004, Blue Gate RV and Boat. Establishment of 136,781 square feet of automotive parking area. This is a boat and RV storage on 7.65 acres, zoned EAC, located along Miller Road. Blue Gate Christiana is the owner. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. Appreciate it. This item, you'll recall, was considered at the March 28 meeting and was deferred at that time due to a number of outstanding items. I'm going to let Mike go into a little bit more of the drainage issues, although we've had several conversations with the applicant's design engineer, Bill Huddleston, I believe I saw him come in just a little bit ago, so he is present. As far as the layout of the plan and everything, that in and of itself is pretty much unchanged. There was some questions about a gate, a couple of gates on this property. You can see that they are still proposing two gates on the property. There is one shown, I believe, one also, yeah, right there, and then the second one right there, where Mike is pointing to. I will say that after looking at the revised plans, something that I did pick up on, the landscape plan, still in need of work, if this is approved, I would just subject that to any approval, that they work, they subject that, sorry, subject any approval to working out the issues with the landscape plan, because there's still several aspects there that need to be taken into consideration. But with that, I'll let Mike handle the drainage issues on this particular property.
So looking at this in reference, it is a little south of the Epsomille I-24 interchange. The property is highlighted in the yellow here. If you know the area, this is a Shell gas station, the Loves Travel Stops on the other side. This used to be Outpost Armory over here. So it is in this area right here. And looking at reviewing this property and this project, it was determined that there is a large area on the east side of I-24 that drains across, and a lot of I-24 that also drains through this area. And you can kind of pick up on what I'm talking about. Right here is a concrete swell and some pipes. I think there's a 30-inch equivalent pipe coming out here. So it's taken a lot of, this is Barrett Manufacturing, the firearms place that you can see from the interstate. A lot of this area drains through here. So in the past, it drained down and just kind of spread out on this property and soaked in over time. So in working with the new school system, not system, but the school site, the Ann Oaks, sorry, Plainview, Plainview Schools, a little bit farther south of here, the highway department's been making a lot of road improvements in the area, and Miller Road is one of them. And I'll kind of zoom out and kind of give you a reference there where I at. So, or zoom out. So this is the new elementary school site right here on Sledge Road, and it's into Miller and then up to the interchange. So the highway department has been diligently improving all the roads around here. One of the improvements that they made was some drainage culverts addition in this area. And I'll turn on the contours and let you kind of see what I'm talking about right in this area. So the water from the interstate and across the interstate would just kind of flow in here and just sit. There was not a drain across here. They got permission from the owner across the street to install a couple drainage culverts. So what the plan is, and I will shift back to that, the, actually, it's not a 30-inch, it's an equivalent 30-inch that comes across the interstate, drains a lot of this area. They're going to bypass it around the site, come around, and then what we're requiring that they do is make some drainage improvements along Miller Road, piping underneath their driveway, then to this crossing here that's relatively new. So looking at this development, they are going to capture their runoff, and boat and RV storage, it's going to be essentially large canopies covering boats and RVs. It's not going to be walled in, it'll have columns and just a roof over it. So it's going to be a large asphalt area that the drains will drain to the south into this stormwater management detention pond area here. And we worked with the staff, tried to get the spread down, spread on the pavement as the water collects and spreads out. We didn't want, you know, people to have to walk through, you know, huge puddles to get to their boats or RVs or whatever, even if they're under a roof, it would have water underneath it. So they've got some inlets, they've got some water quality units to help clean the water in case oils and greases and all their automotive fluids leak before it gets into the pond. They've got something to clean those. So we're in good shape with that. But going back to the drainage across the street, you've got one 30-inch equivalent, which is, you know, a pretty substantial pipe. You have two smaller pipes down here. So we're going to need the development team to work with the highway department to maybe upsize these, these pipes that go underneath the Miller Road. And from there, it should not be a problem. Whoops, I'm using it the other different way. Drains to a big box culvert bridge, and it should not be an issue once it leaves the site and then drains. Yeah, crosses right in here. So we just need them to work with that. And this was a kind of a late development. In reviewing the plans, we discovered that we had more water coming from across the street than we had initially anticipated. So we've been back and forth, and the last set of plans reflected what we'd asked for, but like I said, we're going to need some help with them to upsize these culverts here. Let's see. The drainage calcs came in a little late Friday with all these back-and-forth revisions, so I'll need to review those. I believe it can be worked out to make sure it's not an issue with anybody. But let me get back to the plan. Some of the other issues we had, I think they've got them worked out now, is these gates, and I'll kind of zoom in. They're showing a security fence around the entire site and a couple gates. And they've got an island here, I believe that you would come in, kind of go to the north, punch in your keypad number, this gate would open, and then you could go north and loop around the site. And then you could either come out this gate, and I think you might be able to come out this gate, either one. These typically don't see a lot of traffic, you know, want people to just park their boat RV and just let it set for, until they need it. So we don't see a lot of traffic coming out. We have asked them to do several truck-turning templates, and I think they show those in the plan set. All these aisles are wide enough for two lanes, so you could pull your RV straight in or come in and back, back your boat in. They're all at a diagonal kind of parking, but it's two lanes and, if I can find those truck-turning, okay. Here is the one with the fire truck, make sure the fire marshal and his crew can get a fire truck in here safely and around in case one of these, or if there is an issue, they can get back in here. Let's see. Another one coming from a different direction. So we've asked them to do several of these scenarios, and this is the boat and RV looping through. But this one is showing them going through there, so we'll have to update that. With the gate, make sure that they can get in and out. The other plan showed the island, you see the island here. The most recent grading plan shows the island over here, so, and there's a gate here. So we'll need to make sure they can get in and out properly. All in all, they've addressed our comments. There'll be a little tweaking. So they'll need to just monitor things. They've got a pipe coming out of their pond, it needs to be shortened. We don't want the pipes to be exposed coming out of the pond. Just to make sure there is on the utility line. There's a big water line that comes through the site. They've, and there is an easement associated with that. That CUD has water line crossing through the site and then comes back and crosses the interstate. All the canopies are outside of that easement area. They need to submit plans to CUD, make sure CUD's on board with all this. And then also, we're showing a 6-inch water line, I think, on this side. Is that still active? It is still active, okay. So with the ditch improvements that we're asking for along here, we've got to make sure that it's not going to, with them routing water around the site from all this water coming across from the interstate, we've got to make sure that we're not uncovering that existing water line. We might have to get CUD out there to pothole some holes to make sure that they've got adequate depth on that. So just minor fine-tuning things like that. It does have a septic system for the office. It's pretty large, but, and it is a small office, and I don't think they're staying there, are they? That was just a day office, so. They've got that, they'll need to get a, before they can go vertical, they'll have to get their septic permit from the state and all that. But all in all, I believe they've addressed our outstanding issues. We just ask that they work with us to address all these fine-tuning aspects of it.
Mike Lee brought up last time we saw this about the possibility of chemicals or waste. Out of all those boats and campers, at least one of them is going to leak. Did I hear you say they have filters in place and things in place to take care of that?
Yes, they do have, and I'll go back, they, I believe, it does have a waste area, let's A dump station, for lack of a better word, proposed dump station. That's why they need a big system, I guess, and so they can empty the RV here into that big system. I think that's what, now that Doug says that, yes, that's what, they need that big system. But these are for stormwater runoff, grease, oil, stuff that might leak and hit the parking lot and rain, and run towards this stormwater management area. These will help clean that oils and grease before it gets into the stormwater system. So they'll have to be perpetually maintained, will require a long-term maintenance agreement with these to make sure that they're adequately addressed, and send us reports on those to make sure that they are addressed. But, so, two different, one sanitary waste, and this is oils and grease stormwater collection
Enough of the issues.
Yes, sir. I believe we're in workable range. Like I said, we've got some fine-tuning to do. They need to submit plans to CUD for their review to make sure they're okay with this. All of the proposed canopy structures are outside of their CUD's easement areas, so I can't talk for them, but I believe they'll be okay with that, as long as they can get in there and work on the water line in case they need to.
So the recommendation is okay with all their comments? Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments and a second. Thank you. Any other questions? We have a motion and a second to approve the site plan for item 22-3004, Blue Gate RV and Boat Storage. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6C2, site plan for 21-3013, the Villas at Saddlewood, construction of 124 town home units on 27.23 acres, zoned PUD, located along Franklin Road, land venues is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. The PUD amendment for this property was approved by the Board of Commissioners back in April of 2021. This site plan does appear consistent with that approved pattern book. This plan, you've seen this before, it was deferred by the Planning Commission back in August of last year due to the number of outstanding issues that there were. Since that time, the applicant and his design team has been working through those issues, and have brought a plan back, they think is in good condition. Most of the issues at this point pertain to the access drives on the property and arrangement of the step tanks. We've had discussions with the applicant's team as well as with the CUD. While the applicant has not made their official submittal yet to CUD, our conversations with them, the CUD, indicates that what they're proposing as far as the step tanks appears to be workable, although they, there may be some changes that need to be made as far as the possibility they may have to lose a unit depending on how the final numbers shake out. But from our conversations with CUD, it looks like what they're proposing does have the potential to work. Again, the access drives, these are all Again, the access drives, these are all private roads, so they're not going to be built exactly to what a public road standard would be, but I'll let Mike address any items as far as that goes. But again, these are going to be privately owned, privately maintained. These will not be county roads, so whatever issues there would be, they would have to take care of them internally at that point. Most of the other concerns that we had as staff have been addressed, but like I said, I'll turn it over to Mike if he had any other comments he wanted to make on the drainage or the actual access drives themselves.
Thank you, Doug. They, like Doug said, they have addressed our outstanding issues. There, I think the big hangup was with the step tank locations. I think they've worked back and forth with CUD on that to not impact the location of their step tanks. If you recall, they, earlier they had drainage flowing over the top of some step tanks, some slopes over some step tank areas that would make it difficult to maintenance the step tanks. But as far as the site, they've addressed our comments. Again, Doug mentioned that this road network will be private, so it's essentially like a site plan where you'd see a commercial development on a parking lot or whatnot. So what we typically, a rule state that roads are supposed to be designed to county standards, whether it be private or public. But if they're going to be private and they address all of our concerns, we have the ability to grant them waivers. So typically, the roads are a normal crown section, which, you know, it's peaked in the middle and water runs off each way. They've got, the roads are super elevated in some instances. They're using curb cuts instead of inlets. Tangent sections between curves, typically we see straight sections between curvatures in the roads, and then the perpendicular parking. We typically don't want to see any of these perpendicular parking lots adjacent to our public subdivision roads, but like I said, they're going to post a low speed through here that it'll be essentially like driving around the square. I mean, it'll be 20 mile per hour speed limit or 15 or whatever they posted to be.
Are you saying those roads are going to be minimum standard, they will be minimum standard roads?
They will be built to support, I'm sorry, minimum standard.
Minimum standard of our county roads?
Yes.
They're not going to be equivalent to county roads?
Well, they will be built structurally to withhold the traffic.
But there's a but there somewhere?
Yes, sir. So if this were a, say apartment complex, and it were all one unit, which it is, it's essentially one entity that will own everything, the streets, the property outside of each unit, is that how it's going to be, a property horizontal regime or something like that? So you own your unit, but the property owners group, the HOA or whatever it's called, would maintain everything outside of that. So that includes the roads. So if it were like an apartment complex, we wouldn't maintain the apartment complex roads, the driveways, the parking or anything like that. And that, in my opinion, is essentially what this is. So we've worked with the fire department. They've added an emergency access drive that's going to be gated, that if something happens up here, there's another way in to this development. Stormwater, they've got two large stormwater management areas that will build up and spill over. One of my hangups before, that they now have a defined route that can overflow through between these units. So they've addressed that comment. So they still have to make the official submittal to CUD about the step tanks. They have been working back and forth with concept plans and whatnot, but I think they've got them in the right locations now. They still have to do some fine tuning with the step system, but that's on their approval process. But they will be adding a turn lane, turn lanes, plural, on Franklin Road. There will be a left turn going into Royal Glen, and then also a left turn for this site. So they are making those improvements. I think we've already approved that, and the state has already sent it off, I believe the state's already approved that too. So that's, they are, we are getting turn lanes there. But other than that, I think the biggest holdup was the step tank locations. I think they've got those where they're workable now.
And I'll just read it. I think from staff standpoint at this, after the revisions that have been done, I think we're comfortable with what they're proposing at this point.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Actually, I have two. What's the brown circle in the middle?
That is an amenity, it's a large, it's like a pavilion or something in the center, and then I think it's a large sidewalk around it, a walking path or something like that.
And then my second question is, when, this is a pretty big area for the roads to be considered private, so as a purchaser of a home, you're not going to realize that. Is it worthwhile? I know I've seen these somewhere. I don't know that I've seen them in our community, if I've seen them other places. But I know there've been times where I've entered a neighborhood and there's been a sign stating you're now entering, you know, these roads are maintained privately or something like that. Is that something that we should require when you see something of this scale?
We could do that at the entrance. What we've decided to do, not just this development, but next door at the Burgess, the Southern Harmony, you know, out in the county, we've got the blue street signs that signifies that's a county road with white lettering. In the city, you've got the green street signs with the white lettering, indicate that it's a city street. So on this development or any other private street development like Southern Harmony next door, it will be a white sign with black lettering to indicate that it's a private street. That'll be more for first responders. They, you know, they would respond either way, or the highway department, they would know, driving up, say, oh no, that's a, that's a private street. But we can put a sign out front saying these are private streets.
I like that idea of having sort of a universal messaging. That way, if somebody does call the road department, they can say, what color is your street sign? And then that lets them know before anybody even has to be dispatched. That's a clever way to do that.
Ma'am, yes, ma'am. And they are manual of uniform traffic control approved coloring, so oddly enough, you're not allowed to use a black sign with white lettering for some reason, but who knows?
Is there ample parking in front of all these homes?
I believe so. Every driveway is going to have enough, again, these are private drives, so, I mean, a lot of the internal traffic control is going to be up to the development team and the HOA eventually. But they are showing several areas around for visitor parking, some little cutout areas, if you will, for lack of a better way to say it. But each one's going to have enough for at least a couple cars, so I think they're fine.
So they, they do have, I think each unit has, is it a two-car garage?
I think it's a garage, one or two.
One or two-car garage, but they, there is a plan in here somewhere where they looked at the driveway parking. It's, there's a, it's a huge 24-page.
Yes, and we actually had to reduce that a little bit to make it fit on your iPads. So some of the sheets.
Might not be in this set. There is, there is a parking calculation.
Yeah, that may have been one of the ones I had to take out, Mike, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right.
I think we're going to need it.
Now, there's a 20 mile per hour speed limit. Outlet sign. Oh, and then other photometrics and whatnot. But there is a sheet showing the parking, and they believe they have adequate parking, both for their, on the driveways, garages, overflow parking. Try to find an overall sheet. So they do have these overflow parking spots sprinkled around. I think the mail kiosk is in this area.
I think so.
I think so. So you've got some other overflow parking areas. One of the issues we also had was with a driveway connection back to the recirculating sand filter. They've, I think, moved one unit off of this into this building and I think added it to this one. So they, with the review of the CUD, I think there might be some changes. They might lose a lot or two, who knows? They might have enough adequate soil for that, I don't know, but.
Mike, I saw a page that dealt with Highway 96 and the traffic flow there. Could you pull that back up and just go over that with us again as far as turning lanes and those, that type of traffic control?
Right. So as part of this development, they will be adding turn lanes for a, well, actually, let me get to the, so it'll be a westbound left turn lane coming into the development, but also an eastbound left turn lane into Royal Glen. So that'll benefit both developments. If somebody's coming back from Franklin or whatnot, going to Royal Glen, they have a place to stop and wait for traffic to clear to make that, that turn lane. Likewise, somebody heading from Murfreesboro back to this development, they have an adequate storage space to make a left turn into this development and, but allow traffic to go by on either side. Kind of pick it up here. So there is a separate plan from this that was sent off to TDOT, and they are good with that, I believe, and have, we've approved it and sent it off to the state already, and I believe that they're, they're good with that as well.
Not 100% sure, but I think we've done this before as it relates to emergency vehicles going in there. We've asked the HOA to put in language that does not allow street parking so that we can make sure that we have adequate room for emergencies in there. Can we add that to that?
I think it was part of the, if I remember right, that was brought up at the zoning for this, if I remember right.
So it's already in?
I believe so.
Very good. Other questions? Staff comfortable?
Yes, sir. With comments, of course, but.
Working through CUD and all the others as well.
I move for approval with all the staff comments.
We have a motion and a second to approve the site plan for 21-3013, The Villas at Saddlewood. Other questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Let me just make a quick comment. One of these long-term issues with developments like this, it's, it's good to think that all of these will be homeowners, but some of them will end up being investment developers that will be rental units as time goes by, and it's a concern for communities and an industry, and it's just something that we need to continue to think about long-term that may end up as a residential, it may start as a residential community but end up as something other than that.
And this, if I may add something, Chairman, this is not an age-restricted development like Southern Harmony. Southern Harmony, you have to be 55 and older to own a home in there. This one, I think, is age.
Targeted.
Targeted. So they're targeting the older people like myself now, that 55 and up for this development, so.
Not exclusive.
Not, yeah, right.
Very good, thank you. Item 6C3, Site Plan for 22-3007, Storage Yard, Miller Lane, Establishment of a Trailer Storage and Repair Area with a 2,688 square foot office building on 15.69 acres, Zoned EAC and RM, Located Along Miller Lane, North Star Real Estate Advisors is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. The applicant's proposing, as you stated, to develop the property into an office trailer storage, sales and repair area. Most of the lot, as you can see, is actually going to be used for the storage of the trailers, but as you stated, there would be a small office near the front of the building and a smaller proposed building for storage and whatnot. We did have several comments on this site plan. Those comments have been addressed. This site plan really was fairly straightforward and is in good order. But with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions on this.
Doug, do you have any further information on what kind of trailers they are storing and servicing at this property, and will they be selling them? And kind of what I'm looking for here is I see a lot of trailer servicing companies that essentially become junkyards for old trailers.
Right, and I, my understanding of this is it's not going to be anything like that. It's going to be, they are going to have a sales element here, as I understand it. Most of it's going to be for storage, but I don't think it's going to be for, it's not going to be a junkyard. I mean, we don't want to see that anymore than anyone else does. But that's my understanding at least of what they're proposing to do.
Do we have any way to put any teeth or any kind of enforcement in old trailers that are used for parts and become derelict and just sit there for years and years? Do we have any, once this?
Well, beyond our regulations.
What do we do if it becomes that?
Beyond our regulations that we wouldn't allow a junkyard, I mean, that'd be about it. I do believe that there's a representative of the applicant present that looked like he was trying to make his way forward here, if the commission would like him to speak. Chairman, if you're okay with that.
The applicant here.
Can you show the overall picture relation to the one we had two minutes ago?
Yes.
How these touch each other or what?
That, yeah, it's across the interstate. The other development right here. And this won't take up this whole parcel. It'll be carved off, I think, a portion of it right here. This is the Blue Gate Boat and RV Storage here, and then this, the other development, I think is taking place right in this area.
Do you understand the question?
Restate the question.
Asking about junk or long-term?
Right.
Junk storage?
So to address that, the intended use here is for these office trailers to come back when they're all, when they've been on lease. So they come back, they get refitted, and then they go back out. So that, that's the business model that's being pursued here. These are offices that might be used for medical office buildings or classrooms, things of that nature that are modular, put on lease. When they're, when they are taken off lease, then they come back, they get refit, and then they go back out. go back out.
So assuming these have a limited life expectancy, what do you do with these trailers at the end of their life?
I can't, I can't answer that question specifically, but this gentleman can. He's with the actual operating company, if you'd like for him to explain that.
If you would come up, and if you could answer that question.
We depreciate our equipment over 15 years. Most of our equipment gets sold off to construction companies or so forth, and then we invest in new equipment. We invest, in fact, we have the newest office, modular office fleet in the entire industry. We continuously invest. If we get a piece of equipment that is beyond repair, we dispose of that equipment. And we don't, we're not the type of company that sets trailers on the back fence line and forgets about them. We dispose of them 100%.
Could you state your name for the record, sir, please?
Kenny Gilpin.
Thank you.
I'm the branch manager of the Nashville branch. I ran the Atlanta branch for nine years and transferred back home. I'm from, originally from Nashville and grew up in this area.
All the applicants up here? Thank you.
Yes, sir. It meets our requirements.
It's a big site, but it's, I mean, it's pretty simple, straightforward. It's just like a big parking lot.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments and a second. Any other questions? Have a motion and a second to approve the site plan for 22-3007, Storage Yard, Miller Lane. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries, thank you. I'll say that the county uses quite a few of these storage units at our schools around the, maybe too many of them, but it's a necessary situation for us. That brings us to the conclusion. Doug, you have any?
Just a brief announcement. I know we've been here for a couple hours, so I'll keep this brief. I wanted to, just to give you an update on our comprehensive plan, we do have our community meetings coming up next month. I'll make sure to email you these so you'll have them, but they'll all be on the week of May the 16th. All the times will be from 5:30 till 7:00 in the evening. The first one on May 16th will be at Plainview Elementary. On the 17th, it'll be at Rockvale High School. On the 18th, it'll be at Last Cassis Elementary. And then on the 19th, we're going to have it at the Town of Smyrna Event Center. Again, I'll go ahead and get that to you so you'll have it. We've already placed our advertisement in the Murfreesboro Post for this as well, so I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. Look forward to seeing as many of you out there this weekend. That's all I had. Mike, did you have any? Kenya, Josh?
I have a question. I have a question for staff. What can be done about traffic studies that truly don't represent the growth that's happening here? What can be done about the traffic studies or do the changes to requirements need to be done?
Right now, our traffic study section is located in Chapter 11 of our zoning ordinance. Of course, we have the ability after getting them to read them over and say, okay, do we agree with their findings or not? Just because someone has a traffic study doesn't automatically mean we take it as gospel, you know, so to speak. That's kind of what Mike was alluding to a little earlier, I think, on that discussion with the Walnut Grove Reserve subdivision where we were a little unsure as to whether or not all the growth was being taken into account. But I think what we probably would want to do is go through the verbiage of that section. We put that in there when we adopted the new zoning ordinance back in 2013. Might be an idea, a good idea to revisit that just to see what the wording of it says.
And our comprehensive plan also will identify areas that need, specifically need improvement. But like I tried to stress to y'all, this is areas in rapid change. I mean, it's, we've seen a lot of development, a lot of activity in this area on the south side of Murfreesboro, the Chevival Pike Corridor. We've got one new traffic signal that's online. We've got one more on the way. And I would say at Walnut Grove Road and Chevival Highway, that we're seeing another one pretty soon too, the way that things are happening.
Ms. Chairman, I want to follow up on that because I had the same note that Charlotte did on that. Is there any way for us to go ahead and make an adjustment that says that when they do their traffic study, that they have to go ahead and consider any approved lots? And that needs to happen right away? We don't need to wait on that because, just like she said, I just remember all the years that Josh was our counsel. You know, it's what you have in writing is what you stand on, and if we don't have it in writing, that they must consider that, and we turn it down on a traffic study that says they don't need it, then that cuts in their favor. And so just operating off of common sense and logic, it says, if these lots have come in ahead of you and they've been approved, they've already taken up capacity of that road that now you're also claiming rights to, that you really don't have, it's really not there. So that's misrepresenting the true need of that area. So as soon as we can change that, we need to change that.
And I think even before, I think as we talked to traffic engineers about scoping out these studies, I think we let them know that on the front end, that you need to go ahead and incorporate this into your study because this is something that we want to see, something the Planning Commission wants to see. And then we can catch up with the wording, as you know, when we change the ordinance, it goes through a process, two to three months, like a zoning does. But I think we can start counseling traffic engineers of that fact that we want to start seeing that even before then.
Or you can be like Commissioner P and just require turn lanes on anything he resones, so, in his district.
Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, May the 9th. That'll be the 6:00 PM public hearing meeting. And this chairman wishes to thank you for your attendance and your participation today. It's a tough meeting, but we got through it. With that, we are adjourned.